... our ledger in accordance with Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Further in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 to 21, a copy of this notice is posted outside the secretary's office and also filed with the clerk of the borough of Saraville. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I claim to be the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeAndrea, roll call, please.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mr. McEnone.
I am present.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Sinek.
Here. Mrs. Bloom extends her apologies. She is on a long scheduled vacation. She'll be gone this weekend, back for our next meeting. Mr. DeAndrea, would you review what was discussed in executive, please?
In executive this evening on the student discipline, Hibb reports 2013, 14, 25 through 36, attorney-client privileges, residency issues, potential litigation between IR versus the Board of Education, under superintendent's search, I'm sorry, under personnel superintendent's search, under the negotiations, Sabal Education Association memorandum of agreement contract, grievance number six, and there was no discussion on non-union contracts or personnel agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under correspondence, we have the monthly technology work order report and the monthly maintenance work order reports. Approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of April 1, 2014?
So moved.
By Mrs. DePinto. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Walsh. And any comments or remarks on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. McEnone.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Sinek. Yes. Student council representative report.
Hi. We recently received applications for our next year's student council board of education, executive board, sorry, and from those applications, we, our advisors removed the students who didn't meet the academic requirements. Allegations will be taking place in voting booths and will be happening very soon. We also thought of a new event. It's called the Bomber Olympics. It's basically like a spring pep rally, but due to the time restriction, we're going to hand it off to next year's executive board for student council.
So that'll be going for next spring, then?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, any questions for our student council representative? Okay, hearing none. Parent involvement council, has the parent involvement council met?
Not since our last meeting.
Not since our last meeting. Okay. District highlights, Mrs. DePinto.
Congratulations to the following high school seniors who have achieved top-10 status based upon their grade point average. Udit Modi, valedictorian. Brittany Koska, salutatorian. Nishi Parikh, Christopher Senna. Kelly Bobchin, Helen Quoc. Samantha Storm Martino. Sean Ting Lim. Lauren Squallis. And Deep Chef, congratulations. Saraval War Memorial High School student Adina Shomi has been selected as New Jersey Governor's School Scholar for the 31st New Jersey Governor's School in the sciences to be held at Drew University from July 13 to August 2, 2014. As a Governor's School Scholar, she will be one of a group of outstanding high school juniors from all parts of the state who have been chosen to participate in the program. During the three-week program, Adina will be a member of a community of scholars, counselors, and faculty members who will be immersed in a comprehensive, challenging, and very intensive program. Because the academic and common living experience support each other, scholars must plan to spend the entire period, including weekends, in residence at Drew. Good luck, Adina. On April 5, 2014, 4th and 5th graders at Samson Upper Elementary School, students performed at the Dazzle Gala hosted by Young Audiences at the Princeton Hyatt. Young Audiences Sandy Relief Arts Education Initiative is a grant program that aids schools affected by Hurricane Sandy by offering programming that focuses on the arts as a vehicle for healing and recovery. The program is funded through the New Jersey Recovery Fund and Young Audiences generous donors. Twelve schools were selected for the program, and the SUES was thrilled to be one of them. Students performed a poetry and percussion piece created with the guidance of Young Audiences artists Josh Robinson and Jacob Winterstein. These passionate 4th and 5th grade students have used their own life experiences as inspiration for creating their rhythm poems, which they were excited to share with Dazzle guests using their homemade instruments. It was a delightful evening for all. Congratulations to these ambitious students along with their teachers and administrators who advised the club. The advisors are Michelle Leonard and Janine Morosco, along with the help of Stacy Marr, principal, and Bonnie Brady, vice-principal of the SUES. Students will perform for their classmates at a school assembly on April 10. Kudos to Saraval War Memorial High School's club, Project Unify, for their hard work on trying to disable the label with the R-word, "respect" campaign. The project was kicked off by making an eye-canned video that was viewed on our very own bomber's broadcast and continued with their banner singing and locker pledges during lunch periods. Teachers who were unable to participate will get purple papers delivered to those students to sign. The staff has been invited to engage students in a healthy discussion regarding respect and the power of words. A job well done to the students and staff for this wonderful endeavor.
Congratulations to all those mentioned. Dr. Alfano, I'll turn it over to you for your superintendent's report.
Having a little technical problems here. A, buildings and grounds, it's a use of Saraval High School for the band camp, which will take place in August. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to finance. B, 1 through 12 are our regular resolutions. Resolution 13 is Mr. Walsh will now be the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission trustee. Number 14 is a disposal of equipment, as noted on pages 4 and 5. Page 5 on the bottom, number 15 is a contract with Computer Solutions for our budget, personnel, and payroll packages for next year. Number 16, again, is approval of ed data, also the state-New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, Middlesex Regional Cooperative Purchasing Bid, and Hunter County Educational Services Commission Cooperative for a bidding program, as noted in each of those resolutions. Number 20 is a contract between American Ware for the district uniforms. 21 is a donation from the New Jersey Softball Cricket League in the amount of $5,000 to Izanour School. Mr. DeAndrea will go through numbers 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28, and I have two other resolutions for this section.
Item number 2 is basically a program that's been out there where during the summer, during high-peak demand, we are signing on to agree to reduce our request for electricity to the grid, and they basically pay you in return for it. Something that we looked at last year, got it a little bit too late, looked at it again this year. The PSENG or the utilities moved the timelines. We're hopeful that we can get in for this year in that regard, but it brings not a substantial amount of money, but it does bring some money back to the district by reducing our demand during high peaks.
So they shut us down?
No, no, we just reduce our demand on the grid.
How do you do that?
They have devices on the meters where they reduce the amount of energy that you receive.
So that would shut things down?
Like a gray-out instead of a blackout?
Yeah, it's a gray-out. So you're not shut down totally. If you use 500 kilowatts, you won't be allowed to use more than 300, and generally, these demand peaks occur during the summer when we're not in session. Items 23 through 28 are a resolution required, since we now have the school development authority grants, they needed a resolution passed by the board indicating that we're going to be using capital reserve funds to fund our local share since it's not in our budget. So all these resolutions basically identifies the amount of money that we will take from there on the local share. But keep in mind, this number could change because the local share is determined by the actual bid results, and the school development authority numbers then could change based on the bid results. So this is just to get the grant agreement executed so we can continue to move forward.
If you add up all these numbers, what is the number relative to the total in capital reserve?
The capital reserve, and I apologize, it's around $2 million, and this incorporates about $1 million of that $2 million at this point, if I remember.
So is the other million still up?
Still out there.
All right, is that other million we're going to need for the rest of this?
No.
These projects, or no?
No.
It's for other projects?
Other, whatever the board seems appropriate at that point in time.
I have a question on another item in this section. For 18 and 19, what's the difference between these two purchasing programs?
One is, they're actually, as they say, one is run by the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission, and the other one is actually run by the Hunter County Educational Services Commission.
Well, one says purchasing, one says pricing. What's the difference?
That's the way they name their programs.
But it's the same program?
Same thing, yes.
And why do we choose these two? Does every county have one?
Sometimes you find better pricing under another group, just like the state has their rates. Each one, sometimes you go out and you bid something, you find it a little bit cheaper, and the biggest one is when we go out to buy paper, I look at all three, and you, sometimes when you're purchasing $100,000 worth of paper in a year, a 10-cent difference on a ream could add up at the end of the year.
No, are these the only two that exist in the state, or like why do we choose these two?
No, they're the ones that we belong to, but the Middlesex Regional is probably the biggest in the state.
Okay, I have two other resolutions that I'd like to read, 29 and 30. 29 is, "The Board of Education is requested to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Saraval Board of Education hereby ratifies the final collective bargaining agreement and attached salary guides between it and the Saraval Education Association covering the period from July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2016. And be it further resolved that the board president is authorized, directed to execute the final collective bargaining agreement consisted with the terms of the memorandum of agreement and in the form satisfactory to board council." That is number 29.
And before you proceed, Dr. Alfano, I'd like to give Mr. McEnone, who chaired the SEA negotiating committee, a chance to summarize that agreement for the members of the public. I think the committee consisting of Mr. McEnone, Mrs. Trapp, Mrs. Bruner-Racuya, at one point from the previous board, did a phenomenal job at bringing this to resolution, and I'd also like to thank the SEA as well, Mr. Viers and Ms. Delucia.
Okay, it was a long process. You know, collective bargaining process works, and I certainly support it, and we came to an agreement. And I might go through all the things, there's a lot of things we negotiated that were language changes and things like that, but the crux of it, the increases would be a total of 9% over the course of the three years, at 3% each year. Also, on teachers' salary guides in the contract, there are different columns for BA, BA plus 30, MA, MA plus 30 as one advances in their education, and a total of $500 is added to each step in the columns for that as well. Of course, the other big thing that's always a concern for any collective bargaining unit is medical benefits. As of right now, this coming year, we're in the first year of the contract now, there's no increase, Mr. BA, if I'm speaking at a turn, let me know, in contributions, but that could change as the state does what the state's going to do. But there was an increase in the health insurance for dental, which was $1,000, a limit per year, and that was increased to $2,500. There were other things in there that were relatively insignificant as far as just things that we wanted to clean up. We did some adjustments to the calendar years for different bargaining units within the SEA, when their days of work would be, and that was all things that represented us by the SEA that the board had agreed in. So I'm personally and professionally satisfied that we did our due diligence. This is a good contract, and I think just from, based on the voting, that the SEA had taken on the approval of the contract, I believe it was like 87% pass rate. So that is testament and validates to me that we put forward a good contract. And I just want to give a special note to Krista Delucia, who I've known for many years, even before I became on the Board of Education, always found her to be very gracious and professional in doing. And if you're a member of the SEA here today, I want you to know that you were represented very well, very tenaciously, and it was a pleasure working with her, and I just wanted to recognize her publicly that throughout the course of this, and as you know, as any collective bargaining process works, and you know, the meetings went to sometimes 11:00 in the evening, and she always was very professional and was able to communicate in a positive way towards the SEA, and I wanted just to acknowledge that publicly. So I know the board is interested in passing this contract as well, and I assume that that's going to be done at 100% tonight, which is my recommendation to the board, and I guess we'll see you again in three years.
Oh, it's two now.
I would like to add...
If you could just pull the microphone, everyone close.
Yes, Mrs. Trapp, who was side by side.
They can hear you out there, but they can't hear you on TV.
And Ms. Trapp, I know we wanted to say a few things. She was side by side with me throughout the whole process.
It was, it was a very long, but it worked out very well, and I also wanted to add that, that the members are not just the teachers, but it's the support staff as well, and I wanted, you know, I appreciate being able to, to give them the raises that they deserve as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp.
Thank you. The other good facet about this contract is I think it makes significant strides in attempting to rectify some of the salary discrepancies that we've had, which have been resulting in some of the attrition that we've seen in the district. It's not a gap we're going to close in one contract, but I think it represents a solid effort to try to close that gap and make a commitment to the people who teach our children and support our children every day. Dr. Alfano?
Okay, number 30, there's another resolution. This is a little bit lengthy, so please bear with me. Whereas the unparalleled natural disaster of 2012 referred to as Superstorm Sandy, the storm displaced many students and their families who, prior to the storm, resided in the Saraval Public School District, and whereas many of the displaced families who have been residing outside of the district as a result of the storm intended to return to the district but have been unable to do so, and whereas the Saraval Board of Education has assumed responsibility for the costs associated with the continuing enrollment and education of displaced students who reside outside the district, and whereas the board ceased to be legally and financially responsible for a displaced student whose families have resided in another school district for one year or more pursuant to NJAC 6A:22-3.1A4, and whereas the board is deeply aware of the continuing hardships imposed on displaced students and their families, and whereas the board desires to waive its student enrollment policies to allow displaced students to continue receiving an education in district for the remainder of this school year, whereas the board intends to remove from the rolls any students who does not reestablish residency in the district after July 1, 2014, in accordance with the procedures required for same. Now therefore be it resolved that the board authorizes all students who have been displaced by the storm to remain enrolled in the district tuition-free through the end of this school year, 213, 2013-14 school year, and be it further resolved that the board will take no action prior to July 1, 2014, to remove from the rolls any displaced students who have acquired residency in other school districts pursuant to NJAC 6A:22-3.1A4, and be it further resolved that the board hereby directs the administration, beginning on July 1, 2014, to take the necessary steps to commence the process of removing any and all applicable students from roles who failed to reestablish residency in the district by that date.
And what all of that means is that since Hurricane Sandy, we have had some students who we have basically been providing educational services to, who no longer reside in Saraval due to the loss of their home. Some of those students will continue to receive services because they're actually required to under the McKinney-Vento Act because they meet certain circumstances, but there are, I believe, seven who currently, the families no longer reside in Saraval. This September will basically be two years since Hurricane Sandy affected our community, and it's time for us to basically get them into a position where they can receive educational services from the township in which they're currently residing. So we will continue providing educational services for those students through June 30, but then starting on July 1 and for the next school year, they will need to secure educational services in the town in which they currently reside. Also, for the benefit of the SEA members, I'm sure there's a question as to when the retro checks will come. The business office is going to begin that process tomorrow. They are expecting that retro checks will...
Excuse me, I can't start the process until the board approves the new salaries.
Okay, then they will not start the process until we approve the salaries. The ending part of that is, however, that the... I'm trying, I'm trying to be positive here.
Well, technically, we are. We've got to get the new salaries together.
True, you've got to get the salaries together for us to approve, so the ball is in your court. Your court, okay.
Not my office.
What I'm trying to tell you is that your retro checks will be issued with a special payroll in conjunction with the final payroll of the year, so you will have the money when you leave for a summer vacation. It takes a while to go through 800 people and get the right retro amount and get it all over the payroll and set up, but we are moving on that. Finally, Mr. DeAndrea, on the bills list, I need to abstain on the check for Premier Printing Solutions.
Mr. Balka, I have you abstaining on number eight.
Anything else under finance that people need to note or vote on? Okay. Dr. Alfano, back to you.
With none, moving to C, personnel non-certified, on page 8. There's some unpaid medical leaves. Teamsters holiday schedule, which moves you into page 9.
Wait, I have a question. On the Teamster holiday schedule, is that a contractual?
Yes.
Are those in the contract? Well, since the contract...
No, not...
Not the holidays themselves.
The holidays are not in the contract?
They get 17, and we agree to it every year.
Yeah.
Okay, so what happens? It can, is it subject to change or no?
Yes, there's actual provisions in the contract that we had to incorporate this year with the snow days, that if certain things occur, we have the right to change them with their agreement to give them other days.
Like, for example, they had President's Day last year, they had to come to school.
No, I guess the question was, since the contract expires June 30, and we're approving the next year's holidays, how do you do that with no contract?
No, with 17.
It's always 17. Professional days is noted. Any questions other than the one that was just asked? D, moving to personnel certified. There's a resignation, an unpaid medical leave, a few unpaid medical leave, a pregnancy leave, some additional unpaid medical salary adjustment for next year, a few employments of people that are extending their leaves for this year, and a few contractual retirements, payouts. Professional days is noted on pages 11 and 12, and the substitute list on page 12. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to policy. And again, I will read this. This is for our great librarians who are in the audience. The Board of Education is requested to approve the following resolution. Whereas the quest for knowledge and achievement by students is stimulated and developed through the use of educational resources and instruction provided by school library programs that are staffed by professional certified school librarians, and whereas school library programs provide the means of students to gain cultural understandings and enhance global communication skills in a digital environment, and whereas school library programs teach the skills of effectively locating and ethically using information through traditional resources and new technologies to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage informational and recreational reading for every student, and whereas the school library program helps students find texts and topics of interest across the range of complexity so they are engaged in something they are interested in and at a level that is challenging for them, and whereas school librarians teach students to inquire, think critically, draw conclusions, make informed decisions, and create and share knowledge in preparation for college and the workplace, and whereas it is both fitting and proper, that special recognition be given to school library programs and the world's certified school librarians in education throughout the state of New Jersey. Now therefore be it resolved that the Saraval Board of Education, the superintendent of school, public schools, recognize April 2014 as School Library Month in Saraval, New Jersey.
And what all that means is we have great librarians. Thank you.
Want me to reread that?
You read well.
F, curriculum. Arasman intimidation and bullying. Even though it says 25 to 36, number 31 is not included, it's still being investigated and will probably be on next meeting's agenda, okay?
Can we just note in a minute that that excludes number 31, Mr. DeAndrea?
That's an exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Early dismissal is noted, will be the 20, 23rd, and 24th of June this year. The placements of special education students as noted in number 3. Any questions with that section? With none, going to G, co-curriculum. Change in venue for the freshman karaoke night from the auditorium to the cafeteria, which is coming up in a couple of Thursdays. Approve the annual senior awards night, which is June 18. Approve the assembly program for the upper elementary school on the Department of Agriculture and the NFL New York Jets organization for Play 60 program. Approve the Olive Elementary School to hold their 3rd grade chorus show on May 7. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, support services. These are a wave of transportation, as noted. Listed below are the addendums to transportation contracts for the 13-14 school year, since we went from 182 days to 180. Employment of Saraval school bus drivers and bus aides for the extended school year, use of Saraval school buses for the BIC summer camp, board buses to be used between Saraval Middle School, the high school, and the temple in Parlone, which is number 5, as noted in number 5. The following trips, there are eight of them, as noted in number 6. Mr. Sinek, that concludes my report.
Okay. Under support services, I assume there's going to be some no votes? The buses?
No.
No? We're good?
No, 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 no.
No, no.
No, no, you're, okay, good.
I spoke to the drivers, I saw them driving the other day, I spoke to the drivers and...
Okay. I mean, but it's not a dead issue that we're still going to research, looking into charging for the parking lot, I mean...
Okay.
That's not my hope, I mean...
No, no, that's fine.
That was how we brought it up.
The bus drivers appreciate the overtime, so that's a different... This is the bus driver.
This is about drivers, not the parking lot.
Gotcha. Gotcha, okay. Anything else on the superintendent's report from the board? At this time, I'll open it up to public. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know. Okay, hearing none, we'll close public at this time. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report? By Mrs. DePinto, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Walsh. Any remarks? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Balka.
Yes, except item 8.
Sorry. Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. McEnone.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Sinek.
Yes. Sinek, I'd just like to point out that the SEA contract was approved 8-0 by the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards Association, I attended our national conference, and one of the speakers that we heard was Tom Friedman, New York Times columnist, and I think one of the significant takeaways that he gave the participants there was he talked about the fact that as we now prepare our students for the future, that, you know, learning is not linear. And that was his main takeaway from his remarks, is that, you know, a lot of times, you know, as you look back even on your own lives, you know, who you expected to be at the age of 15 and what you expected to be doing, if you look back now, chances are that's probably not exactly what you're doing, and that your life has basically taken its own turns, and every decision that you've made has resulted in you building on that decision and heading in a new direction with your life. And basically, what he was talking about was the fact that we need to help kids make good decisions, we need to help kids, you know, become versatile leaders going forward in society so that they can learn from one another and basically create a positive life for them. One of the other major speakers that we had supporting the Stand Up for Public Schools campaign was Magic Johnson, and we brought him in as a campaign spokesperson. He's going to have advertisements saying, you know, who I am today began with public schools, and initially when we brought him in, I thought that it was simply a very positive name to associate with the campaign, but when this guy came and spoke to us, there were about 6,000 people in the audience, he came off the stage, walked through the audience, and you got a sense from him that truly who he is today began with public schools. He talked about the time in early middle school when he was playing basketball and they were winning championships, and he decided that he wasn't going to turn in his homework because he didn't need to turn in his homework because they were winning championships. And his 6th grade teacher said to him, "If you don't turn in your homework, you're not going to play in tomorrow's game." And he thought she was kidding. Well, come the next day, he didn't get to play in that game, and his father was highly disappointed in him. And he said point-blank, it was at that moment, that he learned responsibility. And then he moved on a little further, and he was having trouble in 8th grade with reading. He had difficulty reading. And one of his... And one of his teachers said to him, "Look, you need to go to summer school, you need to learn how to read." And he wasn't happy about it, but he did it, and he thanked that teacher for the impact that she had because he wouldn't be where he is today without being able to read. And then the final piece he talked about was he actually attended public schools during the integration of public schools, and he was expecting to go to an all-black school, ended up going to a newly blended integrated school, and as you can imagine, there was a lot of trouble between the black and the white at the time of the integration. And his school principal pulled him aside at 14 and said, "You're going to fix this." And he looked at him and he said, "I'm 14, I'm going to fix this?" He says, "I've got you, and I've got one of the leaders from the group of white students that are here, the two of you are going to come together, and you are going to fix this." And he said, "I learned leadership in public schools." So really powerful speaker, strong advocate for public education, and just great to hear someone who is so pro-public education and how his whole life was shaped by public schools. So those are the two stories I wanted to share from national. Moving on to committee reports. I just want to share a brief update with regard to the superintendent's search. 65 individuals requested the application package. Of the 65, 49 successfully completed the application. Of that 49, 26 are superintendents or assistant superintendents, 9 are principals, vice principals, or assistant principals, 7 are directors or supervisors, and there's 7 others, other positions not highlighted. 27 of the candidates have a doctorate. 42 of the candidates are from New Jersey, 1 is from Maryland, 2 are from Massachusetts, 1 from Delaware, 1 from Ohio, 1 from Virginia, and 1 from Montana. So we had a phenomenal response with incredible diversity to the search that we put out there. And that's really a credit, I think, to the Saroville Public Schools, to Dr. Alfano, to all of the teachers, because when you look at our district, we are an attractive district. Our scores are good, we're not in the newspaper often for very bad things, the coverage that we have is usually positive. It was more positive when I sent this out to the staff on Friday than it is today, but it's still positive. And all indications are people who are coming here are coming to an attractive district and a place where they want to be, and a place that's very well-run. So that's a credit really to Dr. Alfano and to all of our staff for a job well-done. The board met this past Saturday right before Easter for seven and a half hours. We reviewed all 49 applications. We've narrowed the 49 applications down to 11 people, and we're beginning first-round interviews on Thursday, and they will extend until next week, and we'll have more to report from there. We also reviewed the feedback that was provided from the staff, roughly 55 people from the staff, roughly 25 people from the community submitted feedback to our survey. Some very solid feedback that we got, it was very high-quality feedback. One person specifically said, you know, "There's a very fine line between hiring an interim superintendent and an ambitious superintendent. You know, one is just going to basically maintain the status quo and carry us forward, the other may move us in a very significant and positive direction, but may be so ambitious that he or she is gone in two years." And I thought that that was a very insightful comment that the board could use in terms of making the selections. So I'm very pleased with the feedback, and the board's pleased with the candidate pool. Anything else that the board wants to add either on the superintendent's search or if there's any other committees that have anything to report?
Yeah, Curriculum Committee met. Ms. Sayak, you want me to cover, do you want to...
Sure, I think I have most of the information. You can certainly chime in. The Curriculum Committee met on April 2nd, I think it was?
8th.
8th, okay, sorry about that. Okay, and some of the things we discussed, we talked about the number of students enrolled in AP courses and the number of students actually taking the exams. We discussed whether or not we should make the AP exams mandatory in order to receive AP weighted credit for the course, or if we should look at possibly if the student does not take the AP exam, only giving honors credit in the weighting. We discussed the course sequence for high school science, whether or not, we discussed possibly offering biology to all ninth-grade students and offering it as a regular course. We discussed some of the prerequisites for some of these science courses, particularly the AP courses. We, I gave an update on the Park field testing that took place in most of our schools early in April and the end of March. And then we also talked about some new programs that have been initiated at the UES to improve student achievement. Was there anything?
Were there any decisions that were made or recommendations with regard to the earlier items that you discussed, like for example, the mandatory, I mean, you said you discussed that the mandatory AP exams for credit, did the committee make any conclusions?
Well, we had a philosophical discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Baacka and I have been on the Curriculum Committee, which is now the Student Achievement Committee for a number of years, and Mrs. Bloom has just joined us. What we're going to do is we're going to poll, we want to get some information from the AP teachers and get their feedback and what their thoughts on that. I know some districts do that, if you don't take the AP exam, you don't get the AP credit for the class, you know, and that's, there's pros and cons to doing that, and that's the kind of things we're looking at. If you look at our AP scores, our AP scores are very, very good. They're well, and, you know, and one of the things that we implemented, I want to say about six years ago, when we brought kids back, you remember we brought some of our top students back from college, all these kids who were AP students, a lot of them told us that, you know, "It's just the cost of the AP exams. If you want to take five or six AP exams, $85, $90 a shot," and that's when we implemented, that we reimburse students for the cost of those AP exams if they get a 4 or 5. So we want to encourage kids, especially our smart kids, to take those exams because, you know, your AP scores are something college boards and colleges look at, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, kids were taking the AP classes for the right reasons and not just to get elevated credit, you know, to inflate your GPA. So I think once we get that feedback from the teachers, it'd be very interesting to hear from the teachers that actually teach the courses and what their philosophy is about that. So that's not going to go away, as far as a couple of us on the committee are concerned about, we want to still pursue that. And if I misspeak, Ms. Baacka, I'm sure she'll let me know. The other question is, we looked at the prerequisites of AP Bio and AP Chemistry, we're looking at physics, we want to push physics, especially for kids that are college-bound, and again, that's a philosophical thing as well, and whether physics is going to be a prerequisite for AP Bio, AP Chemistry. Right now, it's not required, but one of the things that we know from AP Physics is sometimes the kids like the physics, but they can't do the math, you know, so there's some correlation between calculus and calculus-based physics, and those are the kinds of things we're looking at. Bottom line, what we're trying to do is trying to raise the bar. What we offer here and the number of AP classes, and that ties in with scheduling and all those other things. The other thing we're looking at too is ninth-grade biology, teaching biology in the ninth grade, and that's something that we're really looking at, and I think the next meeting, we're going to have our science supervisor come in and explain to us how we can do that, because those are the main things that we're looking at. We also took a look at our grade distribution across the AP exams to take a look at to see how well kids are doing and those types of things, and I think one thing that we're proud of is our AP scores are very well, they're doing very well. And we just want to open up more opportunities for more kids that when they apply to colleges and compete with neighboring districts, that they have the ability to take those same amounts of AP classes and be competitive in that area. So we've been doing this and working on this for some time, and now we're throwing in the mix with technology is coming into the mix now with how we do these courses. I know last year, we brought online a remote, what's the name of the program?
Apex.
Apex, that kids can take those classes that we don't offer here, like maybe AP Calc BC, that may not have enough students to offer the course here, they could do it online and still get credit for it. Then the last thing I think we spent a little time talking about was the high school math course for media college math that we submitted, did you mention that?
No, I did not.
That we have at the math chairs, Department of Middlesex County College, trying to offer some classes that they can get college credit for. So we want to mirror what they teach in the community college at this level so the kids can do that. So this committee's been very proactive, and I and Ms. Baacka has, and I have been very interested in raising that curriculum bar, and, you know, nine years I've been on the Board of Education, this is what I like to talk about, is curriculum and education, and I spend way too much of my time talking about construction and floors and tiles and carpet and dirt, and stuff like that, so, you know, more to follow.
Excellent. And what about the programs at the UES that you talked about to specifically raise the scores? What are we doing there?
Okay, well, we greatly expanded the number of students in the Title I Tutorial Program. We brought in NWEA, which is an online testing that we're doing with the Title, the Basic Skills Students. They, we're attacking it from a number of different positions, working with the teachers, the teachers have, a group of teachers have a book club, and they're doing a book study. We, I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
Yeah, Mrs. Mar had given us a comprehensive goals and objectives that we're looking at, and when you read these things, they're very well-thought-out, and they're going to work, I mean, it's just a matter of time. And, you know, it's there, I mean, it's an issue that's being dealt with at the leadership level of the building, and, you know, we'll constantly monitor that and get feedback as, you know, I don't understand with standardized testing, I'm not a fan of standardized testing, I've always said that, you know, and I always use this example, and I always challenge the board, you know, SAT exams, would we all be willing to take the SAT exam and then publish our results at the next meeting? Would we want to do that? And the answer is no, because we're all of different intelligence. But we expect the kids to all be the same. You know, that's not reality, and I think, you know, that's why a lot of colleges now that you see are getting away from that standardized testing, looking at the bigger picture, how well does a kid do over the course of four years, what is the level of courses they have taken, how well do they did there, what's their class average, what are the things that they involved in, on, 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 except what a kid does for three hours taking an exam. You know, so when you look at these standardized exams, and they're changing, you know, and the state hasn't made up their mind what they want to do, now we've got Park testing, and, like, holy cow. You know, so those are things that we're grappling with, and, you know, we'll fix them.
Have we looked at the input side of that in terms of, do we have a greater number of students who are coming into the district at that particular age group that may be causing the score problem? Have we looked at, you know, the elementary schools and the kids coming up?
All that stuff.
We've looked at all of that, we don't have a particularly large number coming in at that age group. Part of the issue is that, you know, we're putting them all together.
Yeah, all the grades grouped in one building.
Right, right, they're all in one building, so you're going to have in some of the subgroups, which is where we usually run into the problems with not making goals, whereas you need a minimum number of 30 students for a subgroup to count. You may not get that in one of the elementary schools, but you do get that at the UES, because they're all there.
Okay.
So, no, I mean, we've looked at it every which way, we've looked at, you know, the scores third going into fourth grade, we looked at fourth going into fifth. Some say that the test is more difficult at the fourth grade level.
See, that's the problem, Bill, it's just that if you want to really get some valid data, and Ms. Baacka and I talked about this, you've got to follow kids throughout their school years, not just look at the third grade this year, third grade, well, just kids are changing. Not only the kids are changing, the tests are changing. So how do you ever get that data point that you can really work with and say, "This is the problem." It keeps moving.
And that's, that's what the student growth profile is looking at now with students, with those numbers the state's coming out. They're looking at the students, we don't get, the first year we get an SGP score for a student is fourth grade, because it looks at where the student was in third grade and compares that student's growth to other students. Let's say if a student scored 200, which is the cutoff for being proficient, it compares that student with other students in the state who scored 200, and compares their growth rather than a flat score to the other students, and they come up with this growth percentile, growth profile.
You know, we get wrapped around the axle with data all the time. Here's the bottom line, what's a kid going to college after 12th grade? You know, standardized test in the third grade, am I very excited about that? The state seems to be more excited about it than I am. You know, but what happens at the end? You know, that's, you know, 2030, what happens to 2030?
Yeah, but we got to work on them now to get them to 2030.
That's what I'm talking about, and now that we figure all this out, you know what's happening? You know, we're going to bring on the common court.
Yeah.
So now what? So we spend all this time trying to figure out stuff, and the target keeps moving.
Well, the other interesting part, and I just never thought about this before, I mean, it's conceivable that you could have 25 students in a subgroup at every single elementary school that would not get flagged anywhere as a real, at least not at our level, as a problem, and then like you said, when they all come together, now all of a sudden you've got a problem.
If you're looking at them as an aggregate group.
Correct.
Or if you look at the individual students, and so that's why we look at them not just as a subgroup, but we also look at the individual students too.
Right.
Our SAT scores are good, our AP scores are even better, our HESPA scores were fine. I mean, those are the things that to me are a better indicator of how we're doing than what the third grader did or fourth grader did. I'm not dismissing elementary education, because you've got to build up a lot of it, but, you know, I'm not going to get too concerned about, you know, a subgroup here and a subgroup there, this is a big district, and we've got a lot of students, you know, and what happens at the end, that's just one man's opinion, so.
Any other comments or discussion on the Curriculum Committee?
You mentioned you gave a report on the field testing for Park.
Yes.
How did that go?
The field testing went very well, it was really from, it was really for the infrastructure that we were looking at. A couple minor glitches, nothing that was related to our capabilities as a district as far as the amount of information that could flow back and forth. You know, there was a little thing where it wasn't clear about how, that they had to turn on the sound before they started this TestNav app, so some of the kids couldn't get sound on their computers, you know, like little things like that. The students handled the testing on the Chromebooks very, very well. I was in third grade classes, I was in some classes at the middle school, they were doing a great job. There seemed to be no issues at all with them using the Chromebooks for it, and really it all worked, I thought it worked very well from that standpoint, and it gave us an opportunity to get a little preview of what the test looks like, and actually, Wilson School is not doing any field testing, they sent a couple people over to, I think it was Arlith, to just kind of look over the shoulders to see how to do it and how it went, but...
Our infrastructure held up.
Our infrastructure held up very well, we had no issues with that at all.
And I think you're also giving an in-depth report to the board in June on Park and our readiness?
Yes, yes.
Beyond just the infrastructure.
Right, right, well, as much as we have on it, yes, at that point, but yes. I'll show you some field test items and some of the sample tests and so on.
We'll take a Park test, Mr. Sayak.
Well, actually, I just spoke to Dr. Alfano about that tonight, and that's what I'm planning, I'm going to...
Don't agree. That's not fair, he's a doc.
No, I had a lot of trouble doing a Park test. Two meetings ago, we were all drawing Picassos, so I think taking the Park test would be a good...
Right, I just spoke to Dr. Alfano just before the meeting, and I said I was thinking about bringing in some Chromebooks and having not only the board members, but audience members participate in some of the sample tests.
I think it's a great idea, as long as our results are not operable.
No.
Who's smarter is a third grader.
You don't have to share the results. Will we be considered one of those subgroups? And then we'll just...
No.
Yeah, the board has, we're less than 30, we're good.
Right.
Anything else on the Student Achievement Committee?
That's enough.
Any other committees? Okay, hearing none, any other discussion?
This week I reached out to Gary Whiteson. Gary's the executive director of the POAC Group, which is Parents of Autistic Children. They're based in Brick, they're a nonprofit organization. Basically what they do is they train staffs in ABA, Applied Behavior Analysis, they train teachers, support staff, bus drivers, and I was talking to Gary a little bit about it, and if we were interested in running a autism awareness walk at the high school, they would do that training for free. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to improve our staff and just basically giving our facility, they would kind of walk us through how to set up the walk. I think it'd be a great day for the community in general, and I think it would be a great opportunity for us. I think it's probably one of the biggest challenges we're going to face is special ed, and, you know, everyone's going to be looking to improve, and I think it's a great, you know, way at no cost to the board, so I just kind of was looking for some direction if this is something I can look into setting up for us, if anyone would be opposed.
Mr. Byrne, your thoughts? We finally get to ask you a question here, this is your area.
Thank you. Actually, POAC was into the St. Albert Elementary School earlier this month, and gave a presentation to our students there. It's certainly a very worthwhile organization. I'd be happy to work with you to see how we could implement such a program. POAC is different than Autism Speaks in terms of looking at its outreach, but I do believe that the two organizations, because there is already a footprint here in the district with Autism Speaks, I think we can blend the two very nicely. I know POAC is mainly concerned about parental involvement, and that's certainly a very strong point for us as a community to be looking at, and so I think it's a very important way for us to be able to broaden the tent, if you will, because the fact that autism, certainly as the latest report showed from the federal government, that New Jersey has that New Jersey has the highest rate of autism in the country, and as a result of that, anything we can do to help our students, and as you say, Mr. Walsh, in terms of enlightening the community, in terms of what that would mean for not only our students within school, but in the general community and beyond, that certainly would be a great asset to all of us.
Okay, is anyone, I, I was going to say, yeah, anyone from the board opposed? All right, so then you can work with Mr. Byrne, and we look forward to your next report.
Excellent. And just on a side note, Saturday, 4:30 at the high school, the varsity baseball team's participating autism awareness baseball game.
Not this high school, not here, it's away.
Is it away?
It's away.
It's away. But it's the...
Where?
Um, yeah. South, yeah, I think it's South Brunswick.
No pressure.
I don't have it written down, but I believe, I believe it's South Brunswick.
All right, we think it's South Brunswick, well, it's this Saturday, correct?
It's this Saturday, 4:30.
Okay, so if you check our, our website, there's a listing of all the athletic events, and you can look for the baseball game on Saturday for the location.
Yeah, this, this Saturday, Arlith has their Autism Awareness Day.
Yes.
Right. I think it's nine to one at Arlith School.
That's right, so we, we welcome you to come, there's going to be a garage sale and other things for the children, so it would be a very important, again, the, the growth that we're experiencing in our, in our district in terms of how we can reach out to, to everyone, to everybody to understand the very nature of autism and generally, special education.
Okay, and I got it. We have at 4:30, like you said, Autism Awareness Day at North Brunswick.
North Brunswick.
Community Park versus Somerville. So not North Brunswick High School, so North Brunswick Community Park.
North Brunswick Community Park. So you could hit up Arlith from nine to one, and then go over to North, where?
North Brunswick Community Park.
And in between there, you can stop at the Morgan AA Field for their opening day and have a hot dog. Now you know where Mrs. DePinto and I will be.
It's a date.
Anyone else for any other discussion items? Okay, hearing none, I will open it up to public. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know. Are you still the president of the New Jersey Library Media Specialists Association? I probably have that wrong, but it's closed.
New Jersey Association for School Librarians.
There we go, okay.
I'm Pam Gunter. I'm the Arlith librarian, I live in Madawan, and I am president of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians. I'd like to thank you for your support in recognizing our resolution to recognize April as School Library Month, and just going along with that, the president of the American Library Association, Barbara Stripling, is also a school librarian, and she has an initiative where she has written a declaration for the right to libraries and for the right to school libraries, and we are collecting signatures, so I would like to ask the board and any members who are here that I haven't asked already if you would like to sign. I will be taking this to the, to Washington DC to present to our legislators in May for National Library Legislative Days, so, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a, a question with regard to libraries? And I haven't seen this at the national level through, through my work, but are boards actually getting rid of libraries? Is that's why, why you're doing this, or is it really?
Yes, I've been getting a lot of emails from librarians throughout the state, and the last one was from the high school librarian in Old Bridge, they eliminated their middle school librarian several years ago, and they are now getting rid of all but two of their